Yes.
The court's first.
Nicole, good morning. Are you ready?
So there's a lot of meaning behind that.
Very good. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. I will call the Monday, November 10th, 2025 meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. A couple of announcements. The Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to enter both session at any time. To discuss the agenda item currently before the board, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners also reserves the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of parties involved. We do follow the Open Meeting Act with amendments, which is posted at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meeting Act. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Burns, if you would lead us today, please.
Sure. Join me if so inclined. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just ask that you be with us today as we work together and deliberate decisions that are in the best interests of Lincoln County. Lord, be with us as we move through the agenda, taking items under careful consideration. Father, I ask that you be with those that are working hard to serve our community, from our law enforcement personnel, our first responders, those that constantly put their lives out on the line and confront risk each and every day so that we may enjoy the life that we lead here in Lincoln County and the blessings that you provide. Father, this particular time of year, I ask that you keep our military individuals, those serving both here and abroad, under your protection. Lord, be with the veterans as well as we celebrate tomorrow their service. Father God, we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you've all had a moment to look over the minutes from last week's meeting, I would seek a motion to approve.
Chair, I would move that we approve those meeting, those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on November 3 of 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Upstain.
Ruler.
Aye.
Next, for our consideration, are the claims and treasurers' reports.
Make a motion that we approve the claims and treasurer's receipts that, as always, that if we find something that appears to be questionable, we can pull that particular claim at that time.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Moving on, we have received an order filed, the fee report submitted by the clerk of District Court, the county clerk, the county sheriff, and the register of deeds.
Move that we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the clerk of the District Court, county clerk, county sheriff, and the register of deeds as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Just for the record, the amount of the clerk of the District Court is for $7,336.63. County clerk, $1,227.50. The sheriff's office, $7,041.17. And from register of deeds, $24,888.41.
Madam Chair, I'm going to pass these around at this time for us to sign those.
Very good. Oh, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Now you can pass them around, Joe. That's good. You got them going. Good. Don't come back for that one, Jerry. It takes a while to get over to this side, so that's good.
You okay?
Shoulder.
You did. We went to the top of the peak this weekend. I have never felt a cold like that before. It was something else.
Can you range?
I know. Good morning, Todd.
Bait. They couldn't figure out. Can't even buy an oats.
Yeah.
She's still at her horse.
Morning.
Good morning, Sherri. It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, following the Open Meeting Act with amendments, which is posted at the entrance to our room. We will begin by approving the minutes regarding our Board of Equalization meeting held last week, November 3, 2025.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held November 3, 2025. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hughley and a second by Commissioner Williams. Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Upstain.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Our next item, our certificates of correction and refund is submitted by the Lincoln County assessor. County assessor Julie Stinger indicates that we do not have any today. Next, we have a motor vehicle tax exemption application submitted by the county treasurer.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion. We approve the application for exemption from the North Baptist Church for a 2016 Chevy Silverado that's used to main church property. It's recommended for approval by sharing it would be my motion that we approve this exemption application. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Kristy, is this why you're in here today? Very good. Nice to see you. Good morning.
Nice to see you, too.
Roll call, please. Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
You're welcome. Nice to see you.
Julie, while we're signing this, I just had a quick question. Can you refresh my memory on what parts of town or commercial properties or whatever that your appraisers are going up and doing for?
For 2026, we will be doing rural residential, suburban residential, and the improved actual point sizes.
Okay. Thank you.
You and me.
Is that for the whole county, Julie, or you don't break that up into different areas?
No, we try to do the whole county down. You know, 42, what on right now, that's two minutes. All of them, that's time for review right now.
Okay. Thank you. If we have nothing else for the Board of Equalization, we will adjourn at 9:18 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Our next agenda item is at 9:30. See ya.
Ladies.
Yeah. If he turned to this legit, he's a good member on there. Yeah. And if he went, he went with a purpose. He's pretty dedicated. Yeah.
Is that somebody we appointed to the Ventures Board?
Yes.
Well, we take their recommendation.
Right.
He came on the board when Tom Van was hired.
Gotcha.
And that board made recommendations to somebody approve them.
Okay.
And Kent's right. He's extremely active and very involved.
I don't, you know, it's a little over three thousand dollar bill. It seems like a signature I don't remember from the clerk's office.
Huh?
Not Deckhead. D E. I think it was D E somebody's there.
What's it for?
It's a...
Software? MIPS or?
MIPS.
Software for payroll.
I just wasn't, that's what I was listening.
Was who it is?
Yeah.
You better find out who that mystery person is spending money in your office.
Right.
Looks like DEI to me. Do you have a DEI hire down there? It's a DEI hire.
Yeah, whatever.
Is that diversity, equity, and inclusion? That's the DEI I know.
That's why you can't tell us who it is, right?
That's right.
Okay. No?
You don't have any new employees if you're not aware of them, do you?
Not at all.
Find out who that is, please. Just curious.
I am, too. I've been questioning the bill.
No. If it was to Joe Smith, payable to Joe Smith, I'd say that.
You know, they might be related to that person's years of serving.
It could be. I think you're right.
Well...
Yeah.
It was submitted by Candace Meredith on the invoice, but I wonder...
I don't care who it's been by, I'm just curious. I've never seen that signature from the county clerk's office. And if our deputy county clerk doesn't know who it is, it made me curious.
You don't have anybody in there with, that begins with a D? Because it's clearly a D. I was wondering if it was Derek.
So that's the reason I ask.
I wonder... But you guys are the only people that touch this form, right? That doesn't go to the other party, or does it?
Not usually.
Yeah. Curious. I wonder if that's Derek's. Liquor, what's his last name? What's Derek's last name? Because it's not signed on the claimant's line, it's signed on the official's line. And he's the manager of the MIPS.
Yeah, but he shouldn't sign it for us.
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't make sense. That claim comes to us, that's later.
If you look, all the rest of them that are submitted to us are signed on the claimant. So I just wonder if... But if these don't go out...
But how would the claimant sign it? He didn't have the form.
Yeah, I don't know. Do they?
The form's in their office.
The people filing the claims don't have this form.
The department has. No. You guys do internally.
I mean, I can understand county people doing it because we have...
How about IT? Do we have anybody whose name begins with a D in IT?
Dave.
That's not Dave's signature, though. I recognize his.
That's not either signature, it's him scratching. You'll find out, won't you?
The big mystery. You'll follow up with us. Very, very good. I hope that's the hardest thing we deal with today. It is nine thirty. The agenda item before us is discuss and consider a recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for a manager change amendment for Fast Stop at 1155... Oh, Fast Stop 1155 Incorporated, located in Sutherland, Nebraska. Ma'am, are you here for the liquor application? Very good. Would you like to come up and sign in and announce yourself for the record? Yep, you can take a seat there if you want to turn on the microphone. The red button. Very good. Thank you. Good morning, and you are?
I'm Victoria Yustel. I go by Vicki.
Good morning, Vicki. It appears by, from the application, that you are the new manager?
Yes.
For, um...
For Fast Stop?
Fast Stop. And that's, they just have one location in, in Sutherland?
They get two.
Two locations?
My store is actually on by the interstate.
You all have the application. So this is the application to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to amend their license for a change of management.
Right.
Good morning.
Morning.
Is this your first time managing a liquor license or a facility or?
I've worked for places where we had liquor license and stuff, but I've never had to have a liquor license. But since, I guess, to my understanding, since the owner lives in Utah, they need someone that's based here in Nebraska. So I told them I would do it so that way they can be able to sell their alcohol and stuff.
You say you work in facilities that do sell alcohol, so you're familiar with all the protocol?
Yes.
And all the requirements?
Yes.
The ID and all that good stuff?
Oh, yeah. That I do make sure. We're all on board with, you know, carding, no matter how old they are, just, you know, for safety reasons, you never know if we're going to get stung or not. So, you know, I always emphasize with my employees that we need to make sure we card because, you know, the liquor license, you know, is on the line when we do, if we don't follow the protocol on carding and stuff.
Thank you. Very, very good answer. Thank you.
According to the paperwork, so this is just a recommendation that we make to the Liquor Commission. It says additional information requested or still needed, birth certificate or passport, both pages of the Privacy Act statement, and your individual history. Is that something you will submit to them after our meeting today or?
I have already given that to my area supervisor. He is supposed to...
Is that Robin H.?
No, that's Sonny. I can't think of his name, last name, but I know his first name's Sonny. He's the area supervisor. I know I gave it all my, my, copied my birth certificate and voting thing.
Yeah, but Joe, who's, who's, if you're probably asking for wondering, like, who's Robin H.? Applicant Robin H.
I think she's in the main office there, the corporate office.
In Utah?
Yeah.
We've had this facility before and that's always... Had with somebody out of Utah filing your paperwork. They leave it to the locals to fill in the blanks. Unfortunately, they don't do a very good job on their... No fault of yours.
Right.
I find it interesting that on the application...
The additional information? You mean requested?
Well, just that it doesn't, it doesn't give a lot of details about the location locally. I don't see where it asks for the address, but these are... Nicole, help me out here. All of this has changed recently on how the clerk's office handles. I mean, it's basically all online, right?
Pretty much.
Okay. So they just answer questions that's on a form that goes directly to the Liquor Commission? Okay.
The only comment that I would have is if we make a recommendation from this board, I would hope that recommendation would have to say, pending you receive the additional information that you need.
I think that's a good, a good bit to add.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that in a form of a motion if we approve with the caveat, or we make a positive recommendation with the caveat that the item is listed, the additional information requested, be met to the satisfaction of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
So Vicki, what we would, I think what we collectively are telling you is to get on their tail and tell them, make sure this stuff...
I will notify them soon as I get out of here.
Right, before they put your name in the hat. Right? Thank you.
I will let them know immediately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Any other input? Roll call, please. Hughley.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Vicki. It was nice to meet you.
It was nice to meet you.
Good luck in that position.
Her Naco dues are four thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars. Is that right? Am I seeing that right?
Probably per year.
Sounds right, huh?
Sounds right.
Seems like quite a bit for what we get. Wow.
Big check. I think that's for everybody.
For the whole courthouse?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. It's for the entire county. Yes. I believe that also includes our dues to National Naco. We had an agenda item earlier this year where they were going to combine the two, and I, I think that's hundreds to National Naco.
Hundreds, yeah.
I want to say like eight, I was going to say eight hundred, but I can verify that for you, Jerry. It is nine forty. We will now discuss and consider authorizing the chair to sign the memorandum of understanding between the Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs and Lincoln County. That memorandum was included in our packets.
Tyler, is this required because of the HIPAA laws or, you looked at it? There's a note says you looked at this.
I did look at it. I don't, I don't exactly know what Tom uses this for. I strongly suspect that's what it is because they have so much projected information that they deal with.
There's a reference to HIPAA in the, in the language, and I just perused it. I did not study it.
I suspect that's the intent, yes. Legally speaking, it's in wrong, but, but I think that's what you're talking about. I think that's what it is.
Looks like a database that they use to help the veterans get their benefits and, and within there, it's going to be sensitive information.
Yes.
That would apply. HIPAA rules would apply to that.
Okay.
It was quite the, took a lot of digging.
Whose goodness is that? It's theirs to request it, isn't it?
No. And all the payments were made to all of the other... It was on our part.
I'm going to blame Joe. He was chair that year.
Are there any other questions or discussion? I'll let you pick that up. Just because I sit in the middle of you guys doesn't mean I'm getting in the middle of you guys.
Do my motion to authorize the chair's signature on the memorandum of understanding between the Nebraska Department of Veterans Affairs and Lincoln County as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wiems and a second by Commissioner Brunz. Any other discussion or questions? Roll call, please. Wiems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
It's like a fairies moment, huh?
This probably sounds familiar and tough for all their locations. I'm gonna ask. I'm glad this one followed or I wouldn't have.
I would imagine they probably go through a lot more of those cups.
Oh yeah. Probably a good thing we gave it to.
So, these things like this, I noticed, I'm not sure, I bet there's been a lot of blank things. I think this is through the clerk's office, right? You have that one? Alright, so I'm just, I'm curious. Maybe it's cause Hecky's gone, but nobody's really even signed up. You know, I'm gonna ask my question.
Second class.
Yeah, I guess we're stuck together.
There's been a few of those today. I think the staples get picked on each other.
And they're thin.
Yeah. It's just a little poke a little bit.
Yeah, uh-huh.
You notice I just sign it and pass it. I don't poke the air. Usually.
We're far enough.
As long, as long as there's three of us, what's that?
Aren't you the best?
Yeah, I am.
Hopefully we got a short term or a year somewhere.
We're far enough away, we poke over one.
I carry a, what's that about? Speak softly and carry a big stick?
Wait softly and carry.
I don't speak softly, no. This is, this is my voice all the time.
Yeah, well, sometimes it'll side go out for a little bit.
Good morning Sheriff.
Morning. When the girl who was killed was out there. We know what happened.
I, I don't know the details.
It'd take me a long time to get used to the name of this person. You put a place name, Lloyd's.
It is nine fifty. The agenda item before us is discuss and consider the purchase of a tandem snowplow truck for the Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Good morning. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Good morning Jason.
So we've been looking into our acquisition of a new snowplow truck for the roads department. And I think we've come to the agreement that we would like to purchase a, this Kenworth T eight eighty from Master Tech Truck and Equipment, um, utilizing the Sourcewell contract that they have. Commonly used practice, as you all remember, we've used it before. I consulted with Tyler on it too before today. Just to make sure everything was in order. I guess it is utilized by a lot of other counties. Even in Nebraska, there's a few that are doing the same thing with Master Tech as well to get their, uh, plow trucks acquired. And I think you guys, did you guys all receive a copy of everything?
We did.
Okay.
We did.
Good. The total amount of the purchase is the three hundred and twelve thousand one eighty-three. And out of that, it'll actually be a couple of different line items that we have. One being the truck purchase, which is our, um, truck line will be the two hundred and eighty-six thousand. And then the, some of the equipment that's on it, we actually have budgeted in a miscellaneous item for about the twenty-five thousand. So, but the total purchase is the three hundred and twelve one eighty-three.
Looks to me like that, um, includes the salt sands tailgate attachment.
Yep, that's.
As a separate purchase.
Fully outfitted, ready to go. Uh, the only thing we have to do would be to, uh, put decals on it and put a radio in it and that's it. So, fully outfitted, ready to go. Um, we actually sent Brian and Charlie down there to Wichita last week to take a look at this truck and drive it and, um, I guess get their hands on it and actually see how it's built and some of the benefits of having it. So, um, they came back with just a glowing review of it. So, uh, Brian was really wanting to make it here today, but he had a funeral come up, so he is not in today, but, to speak to this, but I told him I could probably handle it and answer any questions, so.
So is this going to be reserved for superintendent or deputy superintendent driving as nice as that is?
No. Nope.
You gotta put some carpet on it so they have to scrape their feet though when they get in.
Yes, for sure.
Alright, that's, that answers that.
Uh, it's my understanding, we've had a lot of challenges with our, um, winter trucks, um, for snow removal and salt and sand spreading, that we've gotten just about all the goodie out of most of them that we could. We didn't get out timely on some areas because of, um, equipment challenges and malfunctions. And so, um, I feel like buying something new that is dependable and reliable that you guys can count on and, and it seems to have a lot of safety equipment on it too, for the general public and for you guys.
Yes, and our, our fleet is aging and we're trying to work that into our, uh, I guess program here. So we're planning on starting to replace some of our main plow trucks over the course of the next seven or eight years, so.
Very good.
This would be the first one and trying to start to upgrade our fleet a little bit and.
Jason, does this have a, uh, insert inside of the box for holding sand and salt?
No, it doesn't have a liner inside it, um, which we feel, I guess those liners are good and bad. They help save the wear on the box, but then they trap salt and sand behind them and rust the boxes out a lot quicker, so. A lot of our trucks that do have the liners in them are, um, rusting out pretty rapidly.
Well, the picture makes me almost think that there's something inside of that box.
Well, now the, the picture on the front, the only thing different is that's got a slide-in, uh, spreader unit in it, which this one would not have. It will have the tailgate, um, one, so it kinda increases your capacity of what you're able to haul and, um, as far as sand and salt. And then you don't have the big slide-in unit and all the maintenance that goes along with those.
Okay, sounds good. That clears it up.
And you feel it's necessary to go with a new truck instead of a gently-used one?
We do. I think in this case, the, um, I guess these trucks are built specifically for municipal and county work for snow plows. They're from the ground up. They're, they're kinda built for that. A lot of things we've been running into are just maintenance issues that come from trying to outfit a used truck into something, that it's really not meant for initially. So, yeah, I think we, we do feel this is the, I guess the route we need to go to start our replacement of those aging trucks.
Jason, we did work this into your budget that we approved earlier this year?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have to spend the budget.
We don't.
Knowing, uh, Jason, uh, we're gonna have even greater challenges probably on our budget for the next fiscal cycle. Maybe a little bit more restriction on what we can appropriate or request. Is this, are you comfortable this is a good place for three hundred thousand bucks in your budget?
I do, yes.
Cause it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a challenge to be able to come up with three hundred, five hundred thousand dollar line items, million dollar line items for big equipment next year.
Mm-hmm. No, understandable. It's, uh, I think we can deal with that as, as it comes, right? But, uh, for right now, I mean, we're trying to get our fleet upgraded to where we don't have downtime or.
Does anything go offline with this truck coming onboard? Do you take something out of service that's, that's, you're, you're just talking about maintenance issues and reliability issues? Is there something that's gonna leave the fleet?
Yeah, so we will have one that ends up getting cycled through, um, and goes to auction.
What is it? Do you remember?
Uh, I think it's a two thousand MAC is the one we're planning on, uh, getting rid of out of the fleet.
Is there any additional, uh, cost for this warranty that's associated with this truck or is it included in that truck price?
Uh, they do have an option for an extended warranty, um, but we were choosing not to do that at this time. The base warranty, I guess we felt was good to get us going. We do have an option within, uh, twelve months to be able to extend it out to a seven-year two hundred thousand. But some of the base warranty we felt was probably gonna be good enough if we did, uh, choose to add that additional warranty on. We always could at a later date, but, uh, I guess we felt the base warranty on it was gonna be sufficient for what we needed.
So your twenty-year-old truck that you're gonna get out, get out of the fleet, you've obviously predated you. So you probably don't know if it was bought relatively new or if it was new. I doubt if it was new based on the history, but, can you get twenty years out of this truck?
Yeah, oh yeah, yep.
Twenty-five?
With the, with the miles that we run on them, um, yeah, if we needed to, we could get twenty years out of it.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be used for other purposes during the regular course of the year other than just snowplow?
Oh yeah, it would be. It'd be utilized pretty much year-round. So if we're not plowing snow, it's gonna have the plow and sand off it and it'll be hauling gravel and dirt and. So, yeah, this, uh, it'd be a highly utilized truck.
Does it have a pup, um, excuse me? Does it have a pup hitch on it?
It does. So it does have that option if we wanted to do that. We discussed that a little bit. We don't have anything in our budget for anything like that. And I think I'd like to probably ask a few other counties that do use them, how they work as far as spreading and.
I thought you already had a pup trailer.
Huh.
No?
We, we have a couple of, uh, bottomed up trailers.
But not a pup?
No, no pups. Nope.
Okay. Which road district?
Uh, this would be out of the North Platte area.
Getting back to your question, does, does most of our product, when, when we go to, let's say we're gonna take a load of gravel to a road, okay? Where do we go to pick that material up?
Um, the pit typically, so we use, utilize a few different pits.
And do we, but we don't do any hauling of the material to a central or two or three central stockpiles? Those are brought in by somebody else?
Um, yes, but we do haul the stockpile on occasion. It just depends on where we're at with our workflow and if we need the material on the ground or.
Well, what he was saying was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or if we're just stockpiling material in anticipation of work coming up, so.
Thank you.
Jason, when you guys were first exploring this idea, did you check out, um, auctions and other op- options for us for acquiring a truck?
Yes, we went into a lot of different options, even, um, sourcing our own truck and having a build done and that sort of thing. The lead times on some of it's pretty extensive right now. The trucks are two to three months sometimes. The boxes themselves are five months, in some cases, six months, um, and then all the outfitting that goes along with it. I don't know that we'd be able to, I'm not real comfortable saying we could do it within our budget season if we decided to build one ourselves and, and go that route. Um, but like I said there again, we're not getting a truck that's built for this purpose specifically, I guess. That's what these guys do. They have twenty-five years of building these for counties and municipalities through a bunch of different states and they've kind of adapted all their trucks to fit the needs of feedback based on where they go, so.
And back to Commissioner Brunz's question, you did explore, um, trying to purchase a used one to save some?
Yeah, the used market's really tough right now. We were able to find a couple of them, but they were pretty high-mile old trucks. I think we'd just be getting back into the same cycle we're in right now of, um, of having the issues with them. I'm not sure that would be a, the best use of dollars for upgrading our fleet.
About what would that have cost? About what would that have cost?
Oh, there's trucks you can find anywhere from forty thousand all the way up to two hundred thousand roughly, but like I said, they have quite a few miles and quite a bit of wear on them.
If there's no further questions, I would seek a motion.
Chair, I would move that we approve the purchase of a tandem snowplow truck for Lincoln County Department of Roads that had been described as a 2025 Kenworth T-880S snow and ice dump truck in the amount of... I don't see that right out of hand.
The second, the back of the first page, Jerry, away from the bottom?
There it is, twelve thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars, and hopefully we can afford to buy another one next year. Well, second to motion, is this truck currently sitting ready to be picked up or is it being built?
It's setting ready to be picked up minus the rear sander, which they estimated it'd be a couple of weeks to get that put on, so.
And that would be put on down there?
Yes, yeah, and I'm actually, the shipping charge that they do have on here for delivery, I'm actually trying to negotiate that with them, and it might be ready about the same time. They have some vehicles coming up for a big show in December in Kearney that you all are aware of, so we might be able to get a decrease of our delivery cost if we can work something out there.
And what was that delivery cost?
I think the delivery was around eleven hundred dollars.
Can you send somebody down for that?
Yeah, we probably could.
Is that an option?
Yeah, we could maybe save a few hundred dollars, so, I guess I was gonna see what they came back with on the delivery. They're bringing a truck up to sit in Kearney for a few days, and we could just grab it from there and bring it home.
And they also have representatives that work the booth at that conference, so might be a win-win there.
Yep.
Not very many weeks away.
No, it's not.
So, so it could almost be a zero delivery charge, you would think, wouldn't it?
That's what I'm shooting for, Joe.
Of course, they might need a ride home.
There's usually a few of them there, so.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
All right.
Hughley?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Brunz?
Hi.
Ruler?
Hi.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is discuss and consider interlocal agreement for network services with the city of North Platte. I don't see, well, I see Judy here, but she probably won't want to talk to us about network services. Tyler, is this something you've worked on?
I looked at it. I didn't work on it. This is something that the city provided.
So you've had eyes on it. Is it something that we do every year?
Yeah, this is effectively our agreement for IT people. Looking through it, I noted a couple of things back to the clerk's office. I'm not entirely certain how many IT people we have dedicated to us from reading it. It reads that we're entitled to a hundred and twenty hours per week of a network specialist available time. I don't actually know what that means. I don't see any paperwork specifies what we actually pay for.
On page three under H, that's... There's an amount there, and then there's an amount below that.
But go up to G, where it says reimburse the city for network specialist benefits, including not limited to hourly wages, taxes, and costs. There's no number on that.
Okay.
I would think if we're getting a set number of hours per week or month, that would be a set cost.
Kind of like the annual fee is a set cost.
Correct. So I suspect this is the agreement we've been operating under for a number of years. I don't know that they've been costing us on a line-and-a basis. If the board's comfortable moving forward with the arrangement we've had, I don't see why you can't sign it. We can certainly get out of it if we don't like it, but those are the things I noted back to the clerk's office.
I would be curious to know if this is the same as what we've been doing, or if this is an increase. Do we have the last contract to compare it to?
No, but probably would be, have to be in the clerk's office. I would assume, I don't know if Tammy has a copy or not. You, Tammy?
I do not.
Oh, these are in the clerk's office.
If we have a question, is there a reason we can't table it for a week and take a look at those items?
I don't see any reason not to.
I don't see why we can't.
Dave is our employee, right?
Yeah, I've seen three or four.
He stays over in the office.
We also now have Jack.
Yeah, there's three or four guys.
Joe, just a couple of them.
You can see any or all of them, and again, that's why I don't, I don't know what we're supposed to get. I don't know who we're gonna...
I'd like to get a historical perspective first of all, and then further definition of what we are paying for.
Especially the item G. I'm almost afraid, though, to do anything when you read that. Four times a hundred and twenty hours a week, that's three full-time people.
That's, yeah, that's supposed to be, we get three people all week, and we get a hundred and twenty hours a month.
No, it says for a week.
That's a pretty robust IT department.
That's how come I say, God, maybe I'd just sign this sucker down and go.
I will tell you, if you table it, I'm not gonna be able to do the investigation. I'm not gonna be here the rest of the week.
You'll be back the week following that?
I believe so, yes.
There is no reason that we, I mean, it's not time-sensitive, right? I feel like getting a little more information and having...
Guess if we call them up and they don't show up, then we knew it was not a good idea.
I can't imagine the city not working with us on it, so.
I wouldn't bet on that.
I mean, there's also an amount on the second page under B. The responsible for cost, how many, um, core county charges are estimated at seven hundred and fifty a month.
Did it go all the charges fall out except for what we're paying for the people?
Okay. Tyler, will you be able, will you have time to communicate with them on our behalf on this and get clarification?
Well, you know, why wouldn't we just do that? I mean, seriously, wouldn't, I mean, I'll volunteer. I'm not very good at it, but it's not a legal issue. It's a matter of seeing...
It's crunching numbers.
Yeah, looking at the last thing and say, has anything changed from this contract to this?
It's a good idea.
Sounds like you're volunteering then.
I guess I am.
Very good.
Good job, Joe. Tammy, would you please be kind? To remind me? Thank you.
Very good. All right, just to clarify, Commissioner Hughley has volunteered
Yes.
to dig into it. I would imagine Nicole can help us if you want to compare it to the last contract, dig that up.
We'll probably be doing that today, Nicole.
Very good. All right, thank you. This will be back on our agenda next Monday then, Joe?
That'll work for me.
Okay, moving on to our... Let me update my notes here. On our ten-ten item, discuss and consider interlocal agreement, interlocal agreement for maintenance of roads with the city of North Platte. Tyler, I'm looking at you.
I did look at these. They are, they're the same as they have been, but for one road. I think we all know which one that is. Legally speaking, they read the same way. The costs offset. The county and the city have, I guess, matching interlocals where we trade some roads. The monthly amount that each pays the other completely offsets, so there's no, there's no cost. It's just a matter of what roads are on the list and how they are going to get maintained. I do know that I, I read somewhere, I don't exactly remember where, I believe the city made an amendment to theirs the roads will be maintained according to their maintenance program or schedule. I don't know what that includes. I know what ours includes, and I know the board can tell Jason what it's going to include, but I don't know what the city means when they say the roads will be maintained pursuant to their program, or however that's worded.
Which road was taken off?
I believe Vieira is not on there.
Do we know why?
I don't.
Did anybody read the paper? Did the paper have a reason why?
Yes, I'm just asking it for...
No, I mean, I'm just...
I try to stick to the facts, so I don't read the papers.
So I suppose my question would be...
I learn a lot while I read your stuff.
We started doing these interlocal agreements in 2014, and the whole purpose of the interlocal agreements was to get our budget in a position where we were constantly wrestling with the lid. It's kind of a moot point.
It was for the purpose of what?
From our budget and making sure that we were underneath of the lid. We had caps that we had...
Are you talking about interlocal agreements in general or this?
In general.
That, that...
That's based off information that I received historically from...
Well, it was based off of information I was here when we started them, so I just want to make sure we're right, because that is, that's not the whole reason, Commissioner Brunz, period, okay?
I was talking in general, and I know that you're the bona fide historian for the board, Joe.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that when we say something, we have the whole story, not in general. Okay, go ahead. Please continue.
So I suppose my question would be is, what's the benefit for this? You were here when we started doing these in 2014.
What's it, is this the only interlocal we have, Tyler?
No, no, no.
No, the benefit of it is to share services so the public can pay less dollars. That's the benefit. So that when we have many interlocals, whenever governments, I think, can combine resources and save tax dollars, that would be the purpose of it.
I would agree. I would agree. I suppose my follow-on question to that is, what is the actual dollar amount that we're saving?
I don't know. Do the research. I don't know. I have no idea. I don't know if there's ever been a pencil put to it. I would like to ask Tyler that, not Tyler, excuse me. Jason, I would like to ask Jason that question. Is the roads that are on that, would you come forward with a reason? What is the benefit that you see from the interlocal agreement that was in place last year?
Well, I think there's, I think Joe pretty much explained it clearly to me, I guess. For, it's to help each other out and get the lowest cost to all the taxpayers for the roads. A lot of the roads that are on the interlocal agreement are roads that are kind of, it just makes sense for the county to take care of or the city to take care of.
Based on geographic position, right?
Based on where they're at, just so we can not have to have an outlying road, you know, that's taken care of by one or the other, you know? State Farm, for instance, there's, you know, the piece that we maintain out there for snow and everything else. It would make sense for the city to go all the way out there to clear that when we have to go right through there, so.
Yeah, that one makes an awful lot of sense, because I see that, and I think the city's portion of that is only like about a mile or so.
Yeah, I don't even, it might be better. Yeah, it's less than that, but, yeah, there's numerous places that are...
That is a definite benefit to the city for them not to take a vehicle out there, or vehicles.
For a little bit of front, you know, we have to go down front anyway, so where our plows hit front, then we take care of from there on out, so.
On Nineteenth, I believe they have a road that they have a grid, or it goes down Nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I do believe that they're in there.
So they're right there.
So I suppose, a couple of questions. Vieira Avenue was on the agreement last year and the year before that, all the way dating back to 2014, but, so under the premise that the interlocal agreements are there to get the lowest dollar and the best savings for the taxpayer, the city decided to take it off of this interlocal this year. We're still gonna have to maintain it, so is there due consideration being granted to the county for the same reasoning? Because we're still gonna have to maintain that road. It's a county road.
So is there, so what are you asking?
The city, the city decided to take it off of the agreement this year, so we're gonna have to take equipment out there when they have equipment right around in that area on Nineteenth.
Yeah, I guess, I haven't seen the agreement myself yet, so...
I think that's a question that needs to be asked to the city, not to Jason. They don't confer with you, right, before they issue?
The other thing that I might interject is that we might want to do diligence, or Commissioner Brunz, you might want to do diligence as to how many miles of road is maintained by the county, how many miles is maintained by the city to make sure that this doesn't go just backwards on us if they want to play the game.
Well, I'm picking up what you're putting down there, Joe. I'm aware of the miles that we have and the lay miles that the city has, so.
Okay, so you are aware of it then? Okay, and you still think that's a relevant thing?
No, I'm asking questions. I'm trying to understand.
Well, I mean, why?
Well, I can give you one reason why, because this stuff is typically one-sided. I can take it back a few years on the nine-one-one agreement. That wasn't negotiated. That was said, matter of fact, like, take it or leave it.
That's correct.
Yeah. That doesn't sound like real cooperative.
Got you. I couldn't agree more.
And it predates me that we have that nine-one-one agreement, because the sheriff's department decided to give up dispatch when it was just dispatch, and I get that. And it evolved into nine-one-one. Now, the city just simply dictates terms, and we eat it. So in the larger picture, this is a lot like that. We don't want to do it, so tough, sign it or not. So in the big picture, I don't see a lot of cooperation there. I don't, I don't like the tone of it, and it has nothing to do with Jason or how efficient or inefficient it is. It's thirteen hundred feet of county property. Is it a big deal? Well, with a brand-new three hundred thousand dollar plow, you can probably punch it open in two minutes in a blizzard. But the whole concept of cooperative agreements is that it's not one-sided, and this looks a lot like historically the way the nine-one-one has evolved. So it doesn't sit well with me.
Doesn't sit well with me either.
And it doesn't sit well with me.
Tyler, I know you had conversation, you mentioned it in an email to me with the city attorney. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
That conversation didn't really have so much to do with this interlocal, so no.
Okay, very good.
And I would like to add that I would like to commend two of the city council members that stood up against the whole board that thought that pulling Vieira Road off of the agreement was not the right thing to do. I want to publicly comment or commend those two council people for their actions.
Councilmen, councilmen, votes.
The rest of it, pardon my barnyard language, is chicken shit. I can spell that for you if you'd like. I can spell that for you if you'd like.
I know, unfortunately, I can't use it.
Chick... Chicken is not a bad word.
I don't know. I think it'd be...
Thank you, Jason. You can sit down.
Well, I do...
You're not on the hot seat.
I do think the interlocal is very beneficial to the city and the county.
And the county.
Yeah, we do, on the road side of it, we do have a very good relationship with the city, and I think we do work well together. And so I think it is beneficial to both entities to try to continue the interlocal. I think it helps us out in a lot of different areas and saves taxpayers' dollars, so...
I agree with that. I agree with that statement. With that said, Commissioner Woodruff, I would commend the... You know, we had the same conversation around this table. Six of their members, based on at least two years of conversation that they had in their chambers about Vieira driveway. And so, you know, I always like to kind of step... Take a step back and consider all the information. I expressed concern during our conversations about it, about our relationship with the city. I value our relationship with the city. I feel like if we don't feel like it's beneficial to both parties, we can go negotiate, can't we? I mean, we brought up other interlocal agreements that, um, I think Commissioner Wiens spoke to the 9-1-1 agreement. Felt like we didn't have any say in that. Why don't we?
Because they hold all the cards.
Can't we go to the table and negotiate with them on things? I feel like we could if we wanted to.
Good luck with that one. There's no option B.
Especially on one form of paper. Vieira Avenue had a line crossed through it. Like, that decision was made a long time ago.
I had assurances that it would still be on the agreement this year, which it was brought forward to the city council.
Did you say you had assurance?
I had assurances that it would be on the agreement for consideration, and it was.
Oh, that's... Right.
Yeah. I know what I'm saying, Joe.
Because I wanted to make sure that I misunderstood you. I thought you said it would be on the agreement. The agreement for the council to review, because when I spoke with the mayor also, we said I made it very clear to Commissioner Brunz that it would be on the agreement presented to the council.
Yes.
I don't know how the council would vote on it, okay? Because I understood wrongly, and it was my fault, nobody else's, that my understanding from you is that it was going to be on the agreement, so I misunderstood, and that's my bad.
It was an amendment to strike it, and that's what passed this...
Correct.
Yes, correct. I'd like to see this tabled and for our highway superintendent and maybe the roads committee to engage in conversation with the city to see if they can get it added back on. In the spirit of trying to save the taxpayers' money.
So with that said, Commissioner Brunz, if the city came to us and said, "We'd like you guys to reconsider your vote of adopting it as a county road on October 20th," or whatever day we did, I wouldn't appreciate that. I feel like our decision was made by the majority with lots of information presented, just like there.
Those are... That's tomatoes and oranges. Those are two different topics. That's us determining a road based off of information that we've had since 1981, and negotiating an interlocal agreement to Kent's point where we don't hold any cards for negotiation.
What we did on the 20th was we did what needed to be done. We did the right thing. What happened at that council meeting was not the right thing.
Did you watch the council meeting, the recording of it?
No.
Because there was a lot of conversation there about their determination two years ago that Vieira was a private driveway, not a road.
Because they couldn't find the documentation where it was... Which we closed that loop at our meeting a few weeks ago.
We stood up and did what was right to finish the work that had been started. We did the right thing. I still... I believe that to this day.
I'm not surprised at all.
And I'd do it again tomorrow.
But again, this is...
This is totally different.
This isn't an agreement. It's an interlocal agreement. This isn't... I'm not going to go to the city and say, "I don't think you guys should put a road there," or declare a road, or make an improvement on a road. That's the city's prerogative, just like what we did is our prerogative. We're talking about an agreement for cooperative maintenance and getting the taxpayers the best savings possible. I think that we should be able to have some dialogue on that topic.
And it was on that agreement previously because it seek probably was beneficial since they had equipment in the vicinity to take care of that little stretch of road, whereas we do the same thing for a stretch of road for them.
And I would imagine that's been the case since 2014.
I would venture to guess it probably was. And since the people got their feathers all ruffled up because they don't like someone, that's my interpretation. That just does not sit with me. It's not right. I was raised to do things right, and I'll stand by it. I'm not going to stoop to that level.
So what was the recommendation, then?
I was asking to have it tabled and have more dialogue with the city to see if they could get it added back on.
I think you were... I think, to be exact, you were asking, I think, for Jason and the road committee to have that dialogue, I think, specifically what you said.
I think that's the appropriate channel to have that conversation, seeing it deals with maintenance of roads.
I just want to try to get a finite thing, and I think that was good. You'd mentioned a means, so that makes sense.
That's my request, is this particular road is in my district, so...
Jason, Michaela, who would we meet with?
I don't... Well, I imagine Lane Grossup, the city administrator, and maybe the street superintendent?
Probably, but...
Maybe Lane would determine on the city's side who to meet with.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I guess if you were to ask me, I would reach out to Lane myself to talk about it, so...
Okay. Would you want to make that contact and set up... Let me know a couple of options or times to do it, and I could make myself available?
I can sure do that. Yep.
At everyone else's convenience?
I'll get ahold of Lane and see what availability he has, and let the roads committee members know as soon as some options, and we can meet with him.
Perfect.
All right?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, that will be continued to next...
Your decision.
That'll be continued. Jason, do you feel like next week we can put it right back on? Or... Nikki, I will let you know. We'll see if everybody's schedule can be... Come together this week. Okay, very good. Thank you. Did you have anything to add, Commissioner Woodruff?
I can take care of it.
All right, moving on to our 10-20 item. At 10:32, discuss and consider resolution addressing rules and regulations for the Lincoln County Board meetings. Tammy, I believe you gave us all an updated...
No, at the last... I forwarded it to Tyler for you to set in resolution form.
In the last meeting. Tyler, you remarked that you had not seen the...
I had not seen a version of that for a while. I did get it from Tammy. I looked through it. I didn't see anything blatantly illegal. You made a provision for the public to have their opportunity to speak as provided by statute, so I don't... I didn't think there was anything else in there for me to do, quite possibly.
So you didn't have any edits to the one that Tammy sent to you last week? I don't know. Tammy, if I had an updated one, I can account for it right now. Can you print me off one? Oh, here it is. This is it. It's just not the highlighted one.
I can print you one, is that fine?
Chris, I think you had some pretty specific things that you wanted to see and hear. Have you verified that they were changed, updated?
From what I could see in the copy that I had, mine has a lot of chicken scratch on it. It's in my packet, so...
Chickens have been all around this, do you know that?
Chickens have.
We must be more careful.
Tammy, I think on page two...
Tammy's not in here right now, Joe. She went to print something.
Thank you.
She'll be right back.
Ken, I have 130 over here. Is that the number?
That's it.
It's in here.
Do you remember what that was?
Were we going to remove this, or do we decide to leave it in?
Decided to leave it in.
Okay.
Tammy, on page two, I had written, um, at the bottom of the page, it might be your second-to-last sentence about... Or it's the last paragraph on the new... Okay. Where it says... Let me find it here. 12 o'clock. Proceeding meeting for such days designated by the clerk from time to time in advance, written notice, each member of the board is authorized to add it to the agenda. I had, with the chair being made aware of... I'm not even sure what that looked like by the person, but... If something's added to the agenda, we just... The board chair, whoever that is, is made aware of that, because the board chair is the one that usually is the final thing. So whoever's chair, I just think they should be made aware of it. That was one thing that I had asked for consideration. On page... Five. Let me get over to the new five here. Minutes in the second paragraph, fourth line, last word, minutes should be struck and... It's actually on the third line on the new one, and it should say motion recorded in the mo... Oh, hold it, hold it, hold it. This is changed, sorry. In the minutes, okay, it's down. Maybe you already changed it. Consideration of the reason for the closed session. Thank you for making the change already. That was taken care of. Thank you.
Page six. Okay, what is the one you were looking for?
Thank you, Tammy.
Found it. Thank you. So with that one change being needed, um, should we just...
Hold on, just... Did we get it in there about the elected officials being able to close their individual office, Tammy? That was under 13. The old 13, it was emergency closing, and now it's under 11. The board chair and assistant, can you put this file through? But I think the way it originally read was...
I didn't ever have anything in there about...
The board chair declares the closing through that. And then we had a note that county officials may control their own individual offices.
Where is that at, Joe?
Well, that was just a note that I had, because that's the way it currently is. You know, we can close a courthouse, but if they want to close an office, an individual office, they close their own offices.
Right.
I just thought that might be appropriate to have that added in there. Maybe it's not relevant, but... Because if we go trying to say, "Well, we're open," and the assessor decides her office is not going to be open, that's her, the elected official's choice to make that. Does that make sense or not?
It does make sense.
So you want it in there?
I'm asking the board on that. Does it make sense to have it in there?
I think it's good to clarify it, because that is a true statement. They do have the authority to close their own office. They don't need the board's chair's permission, correct?
Correct.
So I thought if they had some...
So, that's what if they had some-
Board chair's the only one that can close the entire courthouse.
Right.
The entire, all the county buildings?
All, yeah.
But it doesn't really refer to courthouse in the, the language. It just says, "declare the closing."
Board chair declares the closing, yes.
So, should we put some, a word in there? Should we make it like it currently read? And that was, currently, the board chair, the board chair declares the closing, it should be of the courthouse, but individual offices? I, I don't know. Or maybe we should word it, "Individual offices within the courthouse, maybe remain open or closed at the discretion of the elected county official." Somebody helping with semantics. They couldn't, they couldn't stay open if the courthouse was closed. So, it'd have to only be, they could close it, but you, they wouldn't want to have their office open if we closed the courthouse, would they?
We're closing the courthouse, we're closing the courthouse.
Yeah. Yeah, there needs to be some more wording in there, doesn't there, Joe? I'm not sure what it is.
I think if we, if the chair chooses not to close the whole courthouse, then the individual elected officials do have the authority of closing theirs. And that's pretty much when he's asking for clarification.
I don't think that's offline.
Right, I think it's-
That's appropriate.
Do you have that, Tammy?
Yeah, I don't know how you guys want it ordered. Sorry.
That's where we're looking at you.
That's where you're going.
I wrote on mine after Joe said it. Elected officials have the authority to close their individual offices. Just add that.
That sounds good to me. I think that you can also put that the county board chair is responsible for the closing of the courthouse. I don't know. Make that the first sentence, however, if the-
Currently, what's on here, it does say, "Board chair declares the closing," and board assistant-
Closing of what? It just says closing.
Closing.
Closing of the meeting? I'm not trying to be smart, I mean-
I mean, they're talking about a weather event.
Closing of county facilities.
Yeah, but we need to say that.
Closing of county facilities? Okay, add that.
Except Jason's office, because he needs to be running-
Well, I was going to go there. Jason, you don't get to close ever.
Elected officials have discretion of closing their own individual offices. Unless the county facility has been closed.
Does that, does that cause a problem?
That is a good point, yeah.
For our sheriff's office, that's a question.
Yeah, because there's going to be some-
When we say county facility, is that going to cause a problem with the sheriff's office?
How I usually post it when it's closed is it's, I use the word "non-emergency offices."
Oh, yeah.
I say we let the board secretary, Board Smith, fist just a little bit.
The board administrator?
Yeah, board administrator.
Secretariat's part.
Yeah, we can't have drums building closed.
Declare the closing of all non-emergency county facilities?
There, you're getting close.
There you go.
There you go. Should we know what we're doing when we look over you to put that together? Other than that, those were the only comments I think that I had. Other than to thank Tammy again for doing a great job, and especially when I'm very ambiguous on my thoughts to her.
Back to page two, then, you mentioned that. Did you want to add wording to that, then? About adding items to the agenda?
On that, on that one, Joe wanted to include that making the chair aware, so. Each member of the board is authorized to add items to the agenda.
And notify-
And notify.
The board chair.
Board chair. Okay. So, do we want to wait until next week to do the resolution after those changes are put in and updated?
I'd make a motion that we approve this pending the changes, because I don't even want to wait one more week to read it.
Very good.
And it may not pass, but this is going on week after week after week after week.
So, there are changes that were made to the rules that will affect our agenda. So, the agenda will also need to have those updates made. Do you want to put a date on there? Or we communicate that with Nicole, and she can take care of it in Becky's absence? Tammy, you're aware of what those changes were, correct?
Yeah, add the public comment, and then there was an item. But where, let's see, did we have where we were putting the public comment?
I think we decided that. There's been just a lot of conversation.
Yes, there has, so it's a lot of the place.
You know what, since I have a, had a second, I'm going to withdraw the motion, wait next week until it's all done. I'm just anxious.
It would be nice to have it add that.
Still going to have to come in front of us for signature next week, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Beginning at the meeting. Okay, so, am I putting this in resolution form? Is Tyler, who is supposed to be doing that?
Tyler, you do our resolutions for us, correct?
I do some of them.
Not all of them?
Could we request that you do this one?
Sure, but I'm not going to have it done for Monday.
Pardon me?
I'm not going to have it done for Monday.
We can, we can-
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll handle it, right?
I'll be home, I'll just get one arm, that's all. It's very slow typing, left-handed.
I don't want you to work when you're off on medical, no.
I can probably figure it out.
What is wrong with the resolution that we have?
I will work with Tammy, and we will get the resolution.
I've done them before, but I can-
I can certainly send Tammy a form of resolution, you can just-
I've done them before, I can probably figure it out.
Does that need to be changed?
I haven't even looked at it, Joe.
Do we have a rule on that?
Should it be included in this?
Stop it, stop it.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that we use our current resolution, that we fill in the date, and we've got the statute numbers that it refers to, and Tyler can do what he needs to do.
I agree.
Does public comment need to be on both the Board of Equalization and the Board of Commissioners' schedules?
They're entitled to comment at both meetings, so.
Because they are two separate meetings.
They'll probably have to have a public comment period at the beginning of the Board of Equalization meeting as well. As convenient as it would be to stack it at the same time as public comment for the county board, that's not, they can't really speak to anything at that meeting, so, two different meetings.
Good point.
Do you have that, Tammy?
Does that need to be specified in the rules, or is that just something we need to add to the agenda?
I just put that on the agenda, frankly.
Very good. All right. We are continuing. Item number 10 to next week also. Tyler, do we have a need for closed session today?
I do not.
How about hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives? Sheriff Kramer is shaking his head, "No." Ms. Clark, do you have anything for us today? No. Awesome. Any committee reports for us? I would like to pass on an invitation from Mayor Kelleher in City Hall, December 18th, which is a Thursday. Tentative schedule, 5:30 PM is the downtown Christmas parade. He said the city has a float or walks in the parade every year, and he wanted to extend an invitation to the county commissioners to join them. I did look at my calendar, and that's the days that we are in carni for the NACO Annual Conference, so. But we don't all always attend, and so he said, "If there's anybody in Lincoln County that wants to join them, they have a lot of fun, and it would be a good event for us to come together for." So, that invitation has been passed on. Also, I received in my packet a letter from National NACO, Matthew Chase. This is the National Association of Counties 90th Celebration book that they put out. I did bring one back from Philadelphia. They had them there. I believe I gave Commissioner Hughley one for his 40th-
Thank you.
Anniversary celebration. So, I'm going to, do we have one in our room here? I'm going to put this one out in the hallway on the table so the public can look at it and see what all the other counties across the United States are up to. With that, check my notes here. I believe that's all I had. If there's nothing else for the good of the county-